Oh, item one.
Okay, my apologies. Commissioner Cavy, is there a time that works good for you in the event you get disconnected?
Anytime is fine. Just want to say ten.
Okay.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. So for the audience, if we get disconnected, that's the appointed time where we would reconvene so that he could join us again. Okay, now the consent docket.
I'll move our consent docket.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. All consent docket. Okay. The claims, is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'm going to approve our claims.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Blanket, are there any changes to the blanket?
I'll move approval.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Opening of the bids. Good morning. We have three bids open, the first is P two one two eight five dash sixteen for Food Service Operator. First one, there is no name outside, so. Kaylee Sweets Denise Barr LLC. Second one is Sarah Miller. Next one is New You. Next bid is CW two two zero three one dash one for Longhorned Supplies and Services. Seed Station LLC. Cracho Creek Farms. Green Shade Trees. Canadian Valley Turf Farm. Sydlot. Next bid is CW two one zero five seven for Uniform Service and Rental. Unit first court. Court from Uniform, Unit first court. I'll scour uniforms. That's the bid opens.
Oh, I'll move maybe tabulated and returned.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Counselor, I was just advised that YouTube cannot hear us, only Commissioner Cavy. Do you believe that that warrants a termination of this meeting? Okay.
If there is an issue, my chief deputy Miles Davidson is there, and it is fine by me if you press on with Mr. Davidson in my stead.
Evidently, you're the only one that can be heard, so it's not your problem, it's our problem somewhere in here.
But if it'll, it'll, if it'll help get things back online and moving and all that, I am perfectly fine with Mr. Davidson representing me for the remainder of the meeting.
If the DA doesn't think it means this meeting has to be terminated, so I think we can go on. Apologies to those listening online or attempting to. Okay.
Fortunately, they can't hear your apology.
Yeah. Maybe somebody will pass the words.
Um, I am going to request, excuse me, that we do item thirty three first. So obviously, we have some guests here this morning. This is the Jones High School Girls Basketball Team, who are the three A state champions. And so I'm going to read a resolution recognizing you all, and then have your superintendent and your coaches come up and speak. So this is a resolution honoring the Jones High School Longhorns Girls Basketball Team for winning the twenty twenty one state class three A state championship. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners is pleased to pay tribute to the Jones High School Girls Basketball Team as the twenty twenty one class three A state champions. And whereas the Jones High School Girls Basketball Team have proven to be a talented and superbly conditioned squad, and has gained the respect of fans and opponents alike, for the spirited and highly motivated play of its members. Throughout the season, each player worked diligently to improve her skills on the hardwood, and as a result, the Longhorns accomplished their goals. Jones won seventeen straight games, including the sixty three twenty eight victory against Roland in the title game, bringing home the class three A state championship. The victory delivered the Longhorn Girls first state title in history. And whereas the road to victory and a championship title is a difficult one, requiring ability, endurance, teamwork, and a positive attitude on the part of both players and coaches. The members of the Jones High School Girls Basketball Team have exemplified all the characteristics that are essential for success both in and out of competition, including courage, discipline, and integrity. Their efforts have earned them the admiration of all those who have witnessed these outstanding athletes in action. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County does hereby recognize, congratulate, and honor the Jones High School Longhorn Girls Basketball Team on winning the twenty twenty one class three A state championship, and commend all those associated with this exceptional squad, approved on this nineteenth day of April twenty twenty one. Congratulations. I will invite up Superintendent Carl Johnson to introduce anyone he would like to introduce, coaches, athletes, anybody.
Invitation this morning to honor these athletes. I, I will introduce our principal, Mike Watkins, our athletic director, Dave Martin. I've asked our head coach, Jenny Holbrook, to join me here, and she will make the other introductions if she does the morning. I will say though, before I turn over to Coach Holbrook, that I think these girls are an example of what all of us have gone through over the last year plus, and the extraordinary efforts it's taken to continue to, to achieve and accomplish the goals that were set forward. Last year, this became the first girls team in the history of Jones to ever make a state tournament. And literally, as they went up to the big house, they found the doors locked. So it was, it was a very hard time last year, and we lost some, some superb athletes that were seniors last year. But the team continued, didn't let that get in their way, and became the first girls team at Jones to not make, not just make the second state tournament, then of course, to win it all in absolutely endemic fashion. I don't think we lost to a team in the entire state tournament, less than thirty-four. I don't know.
Wow.
Maybe we did, we'll find out. So with that, I'll ask Coach Holbrook to make the other introductions. Thank you.
Thank you for having us today, we really appreciate it. And I'd like to introduce my assistant coaches, Penny Young and Bridget Reynolds. This year was obviously a difficult year as well, as well as last year, and we appreciate the chance to be honored by you guys. I'm just going to quickly introduce these girls, and we appreciate you having us. Katie Davis. Payless Park, you guys can stand. Sophie Woodson. McKenna Cruz. Riley Smith. China T. Moore, now you guys can sit, because now I can't see. Cheers Amore. Jaylen Maples. Jocelyn Maples. Maddie Elrick. Zoe Tucker. Boston Mary. Audrey Bane. Abby Stramsky. And Kami Tally. And thank you on behalf of the town of Jones, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. And you all do not, you certainly do not have to stay for the rest of this meeting, this is probably very boring to you all. If you would like, we can either take a picture here, or we can take a picture down the hallway in the clerk's big open space. Are you okay? We do one right now? Okay. So we'll do one right after you.
Thank you for honoring them, that's a good thing. Is there a motion?
Um, I will move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, now back to item thirty one.
Item thirty one is our, we've done this contract before, is with MGT Consulting. Joe, did that get moved back in the right place? Okay, this is to assess the daily rate at our juvenile justice center.
Yes, I think, Commissioner, you actually have this on your agenda twice, is it thirty one and thirty two?
Yes.
Okay, thirty one doesn't have the document attached, so it's your pleasure, whether you want to strike thirty one and thirty two. But as you stated, this is to help us determine the actual cost of retaining juveniles at our juvenile bureau, something we've done over the past, I think this will be the fourth year now, and if that becomes necessary.
Is there a motion to strike thirty one?
I'll move to strike item thirty one.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, thirty two.
Yeah, she was saying that.
I will move approval, if there's no questions.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, District Two, this item thirty four comes to by virtue of the chairman's office, and it is to receive the audit report from the state auditor.
I'll move to receive.
Second.
All in favors, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item thirty five is to reappoint Keith Block, who is, I think, maybe the longest serving member of the Oklahoma County Retirement Board. Serves with distinction, lots of institutional knowledge, and I'm grateful he's agreed to do it at least one more time, I'll move his appointment.
I'll second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item thirty six is just the annual agreement between, or excuse me, that's not what this is. This is an agreement between Bethany and Oklahoma County, where we will provide the equipment and labor for a project not to exceed twenty four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And I will move the item.
I'll second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Now, item thirty seven is the annual agreement with O triple C and Oklahoma County. Move the item.
I'll second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item thirty eight, I'm excited to bring before you, this is the agreement, reestablishing our relationship with Oklahoma City and helping finance the SHINE program for work that they do inside of the city limits of Oklahoma City. This is to include both trash and litter removal as well as graffiti. Any questions? Is there a?
This is, this is just through the end of the fiscal year?
Uh, right.
Okay.
With the expectation until they pick back up with another one July one.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second, and I'll just add that this is, this is exciting, it's very good. This program has gotten some, some good mention the last two meetings of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, and I'm very excited to see it going again, and congratulations to Commissioner Mon for his great work on this program over the years.
Well, I just want to thank you both for your support on this, because this has been a long time coming, and I think we're about to see really great things. So I appreciate you both helping me see it through. All right, all in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you. And then thirty nine, this is our lease agreement between O issues, Oklahoma County for the county cooperative services. Temporary storage shed for their lease.
Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. District three.
This is a reap grant for another project we're doing for the town of Arcadia. And be happy to answer any questions. If there are none, I'll move the item.
No questions?
Second.
Second?
Okay, all in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, Mr. Wooderson?
Six seven. I know that the budget board already approved this, but this for this body. Good morning. I changed the, the United language to amend on this one because there's discrepancies there. So in this amendment, first sentence, it's covered, it should read covered. So I'm asking you to amend, we're going to change that cover to covered, and then make this effective July first, an effective day, so we can have sixty days to notify plan participants.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion with that correction?
Yes, I will move approval with the grammar correction and this contract beginning July first.
Second.
I'm sorry.
July one.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, John.
Cody?
Good morning, commissioners. This item was approved by the budget board last week. This is reimbursement to our employee benefits plan in an amount of three hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and sixty-five cents from our care relief dollars that we see, that we received from the US Department of Treasury last year. These are expenses that were related to COVID medical expenses.
Okay. I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you, Cody.
Penny.
And forty-three is a statute that allows us by resolution to reimburse the election board for, for the reimbursements that they receive that go into general funds, we can add that to their budget.
Motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Forty-four.
Uh, this is a contract to get us through the rest of the fiscal year for our alert system and electro digital.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Engineering.
Item forty-five, this would allow the OIA, Oklahoma City and its contractors, access to that hundred and six acres east of Douglas. And that land that we own, that we're getting ready to sell to them. They would like to do a phase one environmental at this point, so this would give them permission to get on there and do that work prior to this.
I will move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Mr. Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Forty-six.
Forty-six is our Cracho project, and this is the contract with Midwest Wrecking, who demoed the houses for us. It's a pretty large contract, most of it's asbestos.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
I vote aye. Item forty-seven.
Forty-seven is our HVAC contract in this building. We had to buy six additional units for the sixth floor, eighteen thousand dollars. Recommend free.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Forty-eight.
Forty-eight is our plumbing contract in this building. This change would, change the hardtop ceilings to red ceilings. This would allow our maintenance people better access for future maintenance, and recommend approval of that change order.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Item forty-nine.
It's the same contract, it's another change order. When we were going through the project, we actually found that the, the copper piping is in really good shape for as old as it is, it really didn't need to be replaced. I think Mr. Monroe may have brought a prompt to the meeting to, to show you. So without needing that replaced, it saves us quite a bit of money in the contract we can use for other parts of the contract, it's about a forty-seven thousand dollar savings.
If you look at the condition of the interior of the pipe, there's no lime or residue or any calcium buildup, and so this results in a, in a huge savings, and it speeds the timeline up to conclude the project.
Okay.
Are motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Oh.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer? I vote aye. Item fifty.
Again, on the plumbing contract, this actually, kind of companion, I'll change order four, we'll actually have to bring the walls up to the deck in order to do that grid ceiling. So the combination of the two change orders costs us a little bit of money, but it's money well spent for future maintenance.
So our, so this is just in, so changing from hardtop ceilings to grid ceilings, is this just in the restrooms? Do we have hardtop ceilings throughout the whole building? Will we have?
No, just in those restrooms.
Okay, okay. Okay, I'll move approval on item fifty.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Mr. Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Okay, this is the discussion about the cleaning item under facilities maintenance, either to clean or not to keep.
I was asked to put this agenda item off for your discussion. I'll remind you that we hired an additional twenty-four individuals to clean. Thirteen voted to the courthouse, nine to the annex, one in the ICB, one in Metro. We spend approximately fifty thousand dollars a month. Hire and employ these people. Also, we're spending approximately two thousand dollars a month for the cleaning and disinfecting supplies they use.
Do we know what the judges think about this?
I think since the CDC ruling about the topical surfaces aren't really the way we contract this, I think there's been some ease. I think in general, people appreciate that we spruced up and cleaned a little bit more in general. But this is an expensive item, and we bear this cost thankfully right now, but the CARES Act, I think eventually we'll be out of that.
So is there a way to reduce our contract?
Yeah, simply give UBM our contractor notice, and we can cut the staff by whatever you feel is necessary.
Right.
Commissioner Cavy, do you have any comment?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Keith for rushing to get these people, people onboard and cleaning at the time that it happened. We were getting requests from the presiding judge and, and others to do this kind of cleaning, to provide some additional confidence amongst members of the public, jurors, et cetera, in coming back to the courthouse. I do appreciate that, I also appreciate that there are other communicable pathogens that can be communicated through topical contact. Not sure a hundred percent if the flu is, but I suspect it is. And of course, it's a record low flu season this year, so I think it has done some good, I do appreciate it. It is very expensive, and I think perhaps right now tapering off rather than cutting it off completely would be the most appropriate, simply because I do think that not everybody has gotten the memo from the CDC that this is the case. And so I think some additional cleaning, at least for a little bit, would be appropriate, although, you know, I, I appreciate that Mr. Monroe has probably tracked this since he's helping to oversee the contract a little bit more than I have, so I'd be happy to get his particular input on it. But I think tapering it off pretty significantly now, but not ending it might be the best approach with a mind to at some point not, not doing it, you know, canceling it altogether. I would note that I think we're pretty much past flu season, so that's another factor that would weigh into it at this time. So that would be, that would be my suggestion, although I'm persuadable to just cancel it entirely as well.
So we can say cut it in half for, to cut the number of personnel in half for two more months, and then reassess it?
I think you can do anything you like.
Okay.
I really have nothing to, to offer in light of suggested approach here.
Okay.
I know that when people see people cleaning, it's comforting to.
Right.
I can't determine the success or failure of the effort, obviously. But any?
I, I would note one other thing, and that is that I, I don't know if the jury trial schedule has been amended, but typically, we, the, the judges don't do jury trials in July and August. I don't know if they've amended that because of the backlog or not, but that, so reducing it from now through the end of May may be an idea, or the end of June rather, and then look at cutting it off completely when we don't have jurors coming in, might be another approach that we can look at.
Okay. I'm comfortable cutting the number of personnel or the cost, whichever is easiest for UMB in half through the end of the fiscal year, if that's something you all are comfortable with.
Okay, is that a motion?
Um, I will move that we direct Mr. Monroe to, you're giving me a look.
Yes, I have a question. Do you want to stay with the same allocation of people to each building? We have thirteen in the courthouse, nine in the annex, one in the ICB, and one in Metro.
Well, I think obviously it makes the most sense to keep the ones wherever we've got them, and then you just take the halves, in my mind, out of the annex and the courthouse.
I, I would offer that, you know, I think there's less need in the parking garage, I don't know why we need anybody there. ICB, it's, there are some areas in ICB that are pretty highly trafficked, but anyway, I, I would say, I, I am, I am happy to leave that at the discretion of Mr. Monroe, rather than try to roundtable this in an open meeting, you know, piecemealing it.
He just wanted to say cut the contract in half.
To twenty-five.
Let him figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, the dollar figure, cut the dollar figure in half would be, I think, the best way.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll move that we cut our contract with UMB down to twenty-five thousand, and we'll give you the authority to work with UMB on, or is it UBM, UMB, on how many, how many staff fit within twenty-five thousand a month.
And where?
And where, yeah.
I'll second.
All right, all in favors, say aye, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
Vote aye.
Thank you, Keith.
All right, Jamie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My first item, item fifty-two, is to renew a contract, we have a contract with JBI every year. They do our federal financial planning and claims for this title program.
Do they assist you all with going out and actually getting the funds, or do they only assist you all with tracking and reporting?
Tracking and reporting.
Okay. I will move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cavy?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Number fifty-three is a renewal of our contract with OU. Number fifty-three is a renewal of our contract with OU. They provide psychological treatment and group and consultation for adolescent sex offender.
I'll move approval.
Just a quick question, Jamie, I don't see a dollar, oh, I see you do see a dollar figure, never mind, second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fifty-four is a resolution accepting and acknowledging donations. Whereas the following citizens donated clothing to the Oklahoma County Chief of Bureau Clothing Program. Oklahoma County Commissioner Brian Mon, Ms. Hosh Mamin, Ms. Bree Ingles, Ian Moore, and Jim Mears. Whereas David Medina, banging for Jesus.
What is that?
It's... It's a program. With a funny name.
Okay.
He brings snacks when he gets those programs for the kids in detention. It's a yes, religious.
Okay.
Whereas Ms. Kendall Kelly of the Combat Kids Society, she also donates snacks when kids participate in programs. Whereas Ms. Sergio Cardenas and Ms. Maria Rodriguez provide program snacks when they do an Hispanic youth program in detention. Mr. Rudy Klassen with Good Shepherd Ministries for providing snacks. They get a lot of snacks.
Yeah.
In participating programs. Whereas Oklahoma County accepts these donations with gratitude. Be it therefore resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of Oklahoma County does hereby accept these generous donations and expresses great appreciation for all the support received by the citizens of Oklahoma County.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I'll just point out that that's Ian Monroe and he's eleven and I think he donated around a hundred items.
Wow.
Wow.
Of ten and eleven-year-old type clothes, which might be useful for them, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Okay, all in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Tyler.
Strike. Okay, I'll move to strike, item fifty-five.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Joe? Speak on this.
And is fifty-six the duplication of fifty-seven?
Yes, fifty-six is the... George said, strike this one.
Oh, it's not a duplication of fifty-seven, it's a duplication of a previous item. Okay, I'll move to strike, item fifty-six.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
This next item, Commissioner, is a recommendation from the Infrastructure Committee. It is to address the water fountains in the courthouse. It would be to replace, or to actually install new water fountains in a different location throughout the building. We've identified the budget board was kind enough to give infrastructure three hundred thousand dollars in our budget to address these types of projects. So we'll take the funding that's available there for this. And if memory serves, it's approximately forty-four thousand dollars. State something, they accept the recommendation, you all will just move forward with the contract, et cetera. Yeah, we may have to set up that account in the budget board. The way I understand it is they'll just set up a line item and it doesn't require the budget board to take it. But, okay, taking cash.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
I want to commend you for doing this. I really care about these items, so I appreciate making the disabled more comfortable in our facilities. All right, all in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Sheriff's Office, Mr. Holmes.
I noticed this morning reading on the agenda for standing face out, we're doing the school resource officers renewal on the agenda. It says a one officer with the actual contract, contracts, it's a jury. But we need to, that all, it's not going to work. I'll have to bring this item back. Is there a motion to strike?
Well...
Item fifty-nine.
Oh, I see the contract essay three.
Well, if we don't think that'll work with our council, then is that the case?
Yes.
Okay, then, well, I'll move to strike.
This is item fifty-nine, correct?
Nine, yeah.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Sorry about that, that's okay. On the other, the other contract is for casting its original. I will note that we have increased the daily rate from two fifty-three to two ninety-five a day. We've also put in sort of a backstop, so if the schools were to go virtual, if we billed them for a hundred and seventy instructional days, that's what we're recouping as far as the sheriff's office goes.
Okay.
They were to go virtual or they were out for an extended amount of time, the officer, we would still recoup that money.
And this is, and the increase is reflecting that this covers more accurately the cost of this position, is that correct?
Yeah, it takes some more of the benefits. I believe it's up to eighty percent of the actual salary.
I really appreciate that. Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I appreciate the new contract as well, the way that works. Appreciate Sheriff's Office for doing that. And since item fifty-eight is for a school in my district, I'll go ahead and move the item.
I do have one question. With school resource officers, do you all assign one officer to that school? That is the officer school the whole year?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So the school resource officers assign to that school and that's essentially their district. They get to know the students, the staff, and everybody that's in. It's a lot easier for them to rent the national office.
Okay. I'll second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you. Item sixteen.
Item number sixty is a standard renewal with the sheriff's office and treasurer's office for the provision of one deputy throughout the whole year. A deputy and assistant treasurer's office serving in the department. This is standard.
And it's the same deputy every time, right? Can you remind me his name?
Lieutenant Yandel.
Okay. Okay. I'll move approval.
Second.
All in favor, Commissioner Cowan?
Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any citizens wishing to address the board? Anybody online? Commissioner comments, just Commissioner Cowan?
Sorry, unmute there. Well, again, just to praying for the families of the, those killed in the Murrah bombing. You know, I remember it like it was yesterday and we will never forget. So just prayers go through all the families for that.
Commissioner Blumer?
No additional comments.
I echo Commissioner Cowan's comments, any new business? Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Before we move to go into executive session, I'll support that. Because of the cumbersomeness of doing that online, I've looked at the items and I will turn that over to Mr. Davidson for executive session. So I will ring off the call here.
Okay, thank you for joining us.
You bet.
Is there a motion?
I'll move entering to executive session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Commissioner Blumer?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Did someone message you and say they couldn't hear after two?
Yeah. Okay. I saw it. Yeah. Don't want you to... So... Hold it. Level. So... 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 It's... So... 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 It shows... That's right. You know, it's things I say. You want... Guys, how long have you been here, you've thought of it once they said you had? Couple days. Now, we've sent, we've sent all of the security to his office to get him signed. We'll see how long it'll get that night. So... Yeah. Yeah. So... Here I am, spare me. If I may inside. Chinese something to say. Pretty good. Yes. The. So. He's going to be back for PBA. He's not passing. Very dingy. Good.
You said Kevin won't be back for PBA? Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to return to regular session?
I'll move we return.
Second. Second. Are we old school on this or is it hit the button? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item sixty-three.
Item sixty-three, I move that we settle in the amount of three thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety cents to come out of our self insurance fund.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sixty-four.
Item sixty-four, I move we proceed as discussed.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Oh. Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Yeah, I called the public buildings authority together. It was properly posted on Thursday, April fifteenth. There's no need to. Post a continuance time because the commissioner Calvi is absent and now it's just Commissioner Blumer and myself. Is there a need? Motion to approve the minutes of April fifth?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'll move we approve our claims.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And this is a concurrent item with the LCC agenda about reducing extra cleanup personnel in the. PBA buildings.
So Keith, you said the cost of cleaning is fifty thousand dollars a month. Is that split between? A contract with BUCC and a contract with PBA or how is that amount?
Two thousand dollars is is complex wide.
Okay.
So we would appropriate the funds accordingly percentage wise to each building.
Okay.
You need a similar motion then on this item?
I think so. And the discussion was we've only got one disinfecting individual in both the ICB and in Metro. I don't know that we've reduced that. Commissioner Calvi said, well, there isn't such need in Metro parking, but if you think about the traffic that goes to the pay stations through the lobby and and certainly in the elevators. That's where my concentration that people gather mainly. So I would not reduce the investor capital or Metro.
So this contract is really just for one employee in ICB and one for Metro parking. So there's maybe no action needed on this item by group.
Okay.
Any? No action. Item five, approve the contract for parking space.
Excuse me, I'll move approval.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to receive the border fees for March?
I'll move to receive.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was for Metro parking and this is for PBA one through four fees, March twenty twenty-one.
I'll move to receive.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Eight. It's another couple of parking spaces.
I'll move approval.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number nine.
PBA advisory for that. And it is this time of year when we typically discuss whether to increase rental rates and by how much. Typically, the consumer price index change, the change of the consumer price index from the previous year is used as a measure to to increase or change the rent. In this case, the change was one point four percent and I believe it was. Suggested that that be the case.
For this coming fiscal year?
That's right.
Okay.
And this is only for the investors' capital building. We have also Kraus and Lincoln as well to consider, but I believe that will be taken up in an additional.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
I will move approval of this new of this rental increase.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Parking space.
I'll move approval.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eleven.
Item eleven is an accounting correction from the county clerk's offices clarifying what should be. Moved into PBA reserve as of December third. So this is a correction.
I will move approval.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
On twelve.
Calvin, I think discusses the sort of masks. Any properties?
This is for new flyers, right? Posted in elevators.
It's the same measure that was taken.
Okay.
The mask mandate or request was discussed with BUCC.
Right. Is there? There's a date on here for May fifteenth? Oh, twenty twenty. Is that when we passed our mask policy? Really? Oh, my gosh, I'm echoing. Um, so this is to essentially rescind the mask mandate for only PBA properties. Okay.
As I understand it, yes.
Okay.
I can move it.
No.
Okay.
Oh, 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 oh. I'll move it. It's already in place in the in here, whatever.
Okay, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye, I forgot we don't have Kevin.
All right. Cash fund appropriations from PBA to Metro parking, the amount of twelve thousand dollars.
This is to continue our power washing. This is to continue our power washing, make repairs to stairwells where we've had individuals come over gates and enclosures after hours.
I'll move approval.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item fourteen is a cash fund appropriation of about three hundred twenty thousand six hundred nine dollars and twenty cents to appropriation of miscellaneous receipts into PBA reserve.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any citizens to speak? Not online either? Board comments?
Um. Obviously, it's my preference to keep our mask mandate through the end of the month, but I recognize that I don't have the support, so I did a little bit early.
If you need any business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you.